And the United States of America, to the body for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, starting with on my right, please.
Counselperson Joshua.
Counselperson Brendan Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremy Alge.
All right, we're looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Anything else the staff needs to put on there?
Is that everything too you have to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
None in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'll carry approval of council meeting minutes, of the regular meeting minutes of November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, then we'll have the minutes of the truth and taxation minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
All seconded out. Any questions or discussion, do we have? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wasn't there, so I shouldn't have voted on that, right?
Yeah.
Well, there should be.
So, we might be able to vote on it.
See it on that form.
We'll just, we'll just.
I think it's the financing budget. We've got the council payable with additional listening minutes. Any questions, ask finance director.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve financing budget? Do we have any? A second?
A second, sir.
Questions or discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries.
I can ask now, so yes, I'm gonna, they will be bills that will come in before the end of the month that needs to be paid, asking for your guys' approval that we're able to do the rest of accounts payable for the end of December, that the mayor and the city of Mr. are able to sign checks for that.
I'll move to approve that.
Second, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Thank you. I take this to motions in general business. First item tonight under motions in general business will be Labor Pond. We have a request from Rick Labor. Let me get the R C E up here. There it comes. All right, there it comes. Mister Rick Labor, seven sixteen Highway sixty-three South, is attending our meeting tonight to discuss his dissatisfaction with the grading seed in regards to the Labor Pond project. As you remember, he came to the May twenty-third meeting with his concerns. The public works once again had black dirt level reseeded in this area. Mister Labor has now indicated that his expectations do not reflect what he felt was going to be the completed restoration by this time. Included below is timeline of the project prior to the work completed above, also attached are a few of the pictures and proposed quotes for how he would like to complete the restoration. City has utilized the same process in the cleaning and repairs and mending of this area that we use all around our stormwater ponds within the city and in our parks. That process has seemed to work well, even though we acknowledge it can take a few years to be back and restored in a complete way as the city lets nature's rainfall help in the replenishment. Since this mending work has been ongoing during this year, staff's expectation reasoning that complete restoration results may not be noticeable for another year or two. This item is presented for your review. Additional questions that you or Mister Labor may have for each other and on the city. Rick, would you like to present anything at this time?
No, not right now. You got what I presented.
Okay. No, I mean, do you want to say anything or speak? To anything of what I just said? Do you add to that, or?
No, not really. I don't, you know, just very disappointed the way, way the whole process is went.
You're upset with the process, or you're upset with the outcome?
I'm, I'm upset with the outcome, the way everything is looking.
So I understand, it's hard to tell. Obviously, I couldn't drive by and look at it again tonight, but.
No.
So you, your yard is always kept very nice, I'm aware of that. And then when you get close to the pond, that's where the issue is kind of where it graded down.
That's where they graded it out.
But what, what exactly, what's going on? I mean, I'm looking at these pictures and it looks like clumps of weeds, but apparently they've done grassy.
Well, what happens is there's just big holes everywhere, you know, so when you try to mow it or anything, I mean, it's just, I mow at the absolute highest level. And the last time they dumped dirt down there and drug it, they threw rocks all over my yard yet again. And they didn't pick any of the rocks up. I hit some more rocks with my lawnmower. I mean.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
It's just, the process is just, I, I understand maybe this is fine for a pond or whatever, but I mean, we are gonna go on our fourth year now.
What?
It started in nineteen.
Do we have any idea why none of the grading takes? I don't understand. I guess I, I don't know enough about what's going on, or maybe you can help me with that, John.
Well, timing of the project was, the restoration was done right before our drought year.
Before what?
The drought, like year of the drought. And so the original seed didn't take. We've reseeded a couple times, trying to get things to take. But this past summer also wasn't the best in rain of when things are happening. I know Public Works has been out there multiple times, taking out rocks and putting down more black dirt and reseeding again. But it does take time for it to establish. And we don't normally go and do sod or that type of, on, it's too hard to, for us to maintain that type with watering systems and everything else, so.
Go ahead.
Um, because I did mention that maybe we should test the dirt, too, to just make sure that it wasn't really the problem.
Well, like similar to what we did on the fourth, right?
Yes, more, yeah, right.
So we could do that.
Wait issues there.
Yeah, the, the dirt that Public Works uses is coming from that same dirt pile, but we did test that on fourth and it was okay, but added more fertilizers.
I'm just curious what our options are, because clearly, I mean, maybe wait, again, maybe it does take another two years. You have a good year for handin' that, that helps, but I, if it's all, how's that, how would that fix all the holes and?
So, when Sean and I have gone and looked, it's, yeah, it's where seed hasn't taken.
Right.
That is lower, so you don't have your, you don't have your grass root ball, or grass roots bringing it up. And, and that they've added some black dirt and tried to seed it, and it, that just hasn't quite been taking. It honestly might be good to allow it to grow further and let it seed itself, um, for the seeding period. But I'm not an agriculturalist.
Well, you gotta be, be.
So, um.
I'm all in for waiting, if you want to wait, but I want the project finished now. I want all the holes filled. I want the hill done. The whole hill was supposed to be done. Everything was supposed to be done. All that, that hill is full of weeds and everything. I mean, it was all supposed to be seeded over by the neighbor's yard. None of that was even touched with any dirt.
From my knowledge, and what has been reported to me, that they have been seeded, but.
Okay.
Might not have taken. Um, but I'm not out there every day, and I'm.
I'm not there every day.
I don't get called when they're going to do work either, but I do, I respect Sean and.
I absolutely, because I, I don't think Sean would lie about it by any means. And I absolutely understand where you're coming from. It doesn't seem to me that there's a really easy fix. It is pretty commendable that you're willing to wait, because it sounds like according to what Sean wrote, according to what she says, that might be part of it. If there isn't any areas, though, like where we didn't do at least what they said they tried to do, like, um, seeding this hill or what you said, I, I think that needs to be done, um.
There's also a, a weather timing issue right now. Um, can't do too much.
Oh, I know, that's why I was surprised to see it out here right now, but nonetheless.
Well, I just got this bid. It took, it took months to get my bid.
So what, what's the difference between this bid, anything that we've done?
What's the difference? They're actually gonna burn it completely down to nothing. They're gonna, they're gonna kill everything, all the weeds and the junk. And then they're gonna till it up, and then they're gonna level the whole thing out, and then they're gonna reseed it.
That never happened in the beginning?
No.
I mean, as far as the signing?
Not a chance. It was done by a bulldozer, and that's why it's so rough right now.
We typically do not apply killers or anything.
I don't, yeah, I wouldn't expect to like, for it to look like a yard. I don't expect it to look like the way he keeps his yard. I mean, it's around the pond. I can be realistic on that.
But it is attached to my yard.
But there's gotta be, I hope your vision isn't this perfect yard that goes right down into this beautiful swimming pond.
I actually, beyond the trees that I planted three feet, if you wanna leave it like that, that is your prerogative. That is the city's property. I have no problem with that. But from my yard, up to my yard should look immaculate is what I want.
Wish I knew where I could see where those trees were.
You see that fence line on the top picture?
Yeah.
I tried to give them a picture of before the project even started, so they could see how green and good the grass was. So if you can see those fence poles? That's where the tree line is today, Ross. We're actually to be alone down there.
So you have trees like, like kind of like.
Um, actually, what, yeah, what we have is we have trees right along in here. See, right in here is where the property. So all this is my yard, and then it goes back over into the neighbor's property. So from like right in here all the way over.
Is that, is that all this whole area on the pond?
Actually, it's, it actually is to take care of this whole area right here, from that yard all the way down to the fence. All this whole area, not the pond areas, just where the property line lies.
This isn't an action I treat as it?
So he just.
Not long perhaps.
I know, not at all much Rick wants is working with his side of it, but one of the options is until this takes better, or we put more dirt in or watch it, is just have our guys do the mowing on that section, so you don't have to worry about the bumpiness or the rocks until that gets sieved out, if you will.
Because our guys.
Our guys will be down there doing the pond, while then if we come over, because what do you estimate?
Well, the last time we dumped dirt, I haven't mowed any of that. I don't, I wheel around and mow over by the neighbor's yard. That's why I know that hasn't been done at all, because I don't want that to look terrible.
When you say neighbors, are you talking like the backside of the verb?
My boroughs Boulevard, yeah, there's, them are my neighbors. I own right up to their property line.
Would you allow us to do that, Rick, to pull that strip in there, so we can see if the spring rains bring anything along, if it starts coming a little bit or not?
Yeah, we can, we can wait, I guess.
Just to keep his equipment out of that area?
Keep his equipment.
We don't want it, that to get any more damage.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, too.
Then I guess the confusion part, I'll admit from the staff, is that hill where the trestle used to be.
Yeah.
It was all of our understandings. I thought, Jenna, that it was just to be molded out like that, um, the way it is. And I grant you, the weeds have come up, but I thought.
I thought it was gonna be seeded so I could mow that.
But is the angle of that, how it got mended or molded?
Yeah, because Sean molded it.
From your standpoint?
Molded it so we could mow it.
Right. Because we tried to go at the same grade that you see going down into the pond, because our mowers have to get that kind of grade. And I, I thought that grade was acceptable to what your mower can.
And, and I'm not, I'm not complaining about the grade of the.
Okay, so it's just weeds.
Just the weeds and the rocks and the stumps in there. I mean, I dare not, I'm not taking my lawnmower like that till it gets cleaned up.
Is there a way to water it? Because that was the biggest problem is.
I would water it if, I will water it if it's worthy of watering. Right now, it ain't worthy of watering.
Yeah, if we can get it leveled out and plant the seed, I think.
I have no problem bringing water down there and watering it.
I'm just thinking if our, if we have like a, well, sprinklers or sprayer system that we can put out there temporarily, just.
That obviously would help a lot. You know, on our street projects, the contractor brings water in for those first thirty days, which helped give it a better head start. Here, like we said, we've just had to let nature take its course with watering.
Typical practices for sodding, we deal with water for thirty days, and then actually the property owner will be responsible for what happens. Um, seeding projects are where things grow more naturally. Typical practice of not allowing the watering and just allowing it to naturally grow.
Yeah, we end up.
But it's not happening, yeah.
If it rains like three or four inches, then we're not gonna water it, but we're not getting rain for a month.
But the thing is, if, if this would have been done prior to this spring, we had the best spring grow, growing grass season we had, but nothing, again, was done. Until I came to a couple of meetings and then they spread a little bit more dirt, throw some more seed out there. I mean, I just, I don't want to keep coming to meetings and, and keep harping and harping. I mean, I, my patience is pretty low right now. I mean, it's just, I'd like the project to be done.
Quick, quick question. On the folks that gave you the quote, I guess they were gonna till it up and redo it. I was gonna say, when they first looked at it, did they think dirt should be filled up to the level of the grass?
No, because they, they said that they thought the dirt was fine. They, they figured it needed, that weeds needed to be killed, and then they would wait whatever roundup takes of a month or whatever it is, and then they'd come up, come up and work the land and then regrade everything and then reseed it.
That quote they gave you, Rick, how long was that good for? They gave it to you pretty late in the year. Are they gonna?
Well, pretty late in the year. I have no idea how long that quote's good for. I would doubt they'll call it when they ask.
Because I, I, I honestly, I'd ask you to give us the spring, let us see what the spring, all these greens up stuff, you know that. Give us the opportunity to mow it a little bit, see if it doesn't start coming around a little after it's been reseeded. They got seeded late again this year, and it's gonna take some more water in the spring. So, that's the only thing I'm gonna ask you. If you'd let us mow it, take a look at it. If we have to add a little more, we'll see what we gotta do, but before you go spend seventeen thousand dollars and then we really get into a battle, because imagine you're gonna want us to spend seventeen thousand. Is that what you brought it to us for?
No.
Can't believe they charge three grand for travel charge.
That'll come down to.
From Rochester?
What I'm telling you is, just to be honest with you, that'll come down to a fight, if that's what it comes to. You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
And I don't want that. I don't really think, you've been awful good about all this, and I don't think you really want it either, but I know where you're at. But I'm asking you to give us this opportunity this spring to see if we can get it going. I know I've asked you for your patience before, and you've given it to me, and I'm very grateful for that. Because I, I've known Rick a while, and sometimes his patience runs out really fast.
Yeah, he can.
I know.
He had a lot of patience with this.
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing with that. So I'll ask you that before you go sign a contract and spend seventeen thousand, but that's your choice. You can go sign that contract right now if you want to, but I'm just gonna very upfront to you, it'll be a very nasty, I shouldn't say nasty. It'll be a very extended battle to see what happens after that.
I think he's already made clear he's willing to wait. We just gotta make sure that this is a priority to look into.
Yeah.
In the spring. See what we can do.
All right, you got the spring.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you're not gonna probably like to hear, but I wish you a Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you. You know, cheering up like a nap right now.
I, like I said, we extend our sympathies to you.
Thank you.
There are applause for your family, but I know you'll carry on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that one was into the twenty twenty-three budget. We're looking for approval of budget and tax levy. As long as we've got the county here, let's chew them out a little bit.
Stretch out those valuation changes so they all have it all at one time.
Three years in a row.
All right. Well, you might as well get ready for it. I don't know if they trained you in that harassment yet or not, okay?
Wow. I'm thrilled with it.
Yeah. All right, number one, approval of twenty twenty-three budget. After discussions held, the twenty twenty-three budget, proposed final budget is nine million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. The second motion will be the truth of taxation presentation was held on December fifth to receive public comments, concerns, or additional input. Okay, in September, the council certified the preliminary levy of four million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, plus the pool referendum levy of one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine, and a fire hall referendum levy of one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight. The council may certify this amount or a lower amount as a final levy. The attached resolution shows the revised levy amount as presented in the truth taxation presentation is at four million, sixty-four dollars, seven, seven hundred and seventeen. Certified final levy needs to be adopted and sent to the county auditor honor before December thirtieth. So, any discussion on the budget, anything else anybody remembered, wants to change, wants to do? All approved the way it is. I want to make sure that we certify the lesser of the two.
Right. So the other thing is, I just wanted to give you a little bit of, uh, a couple more details, um, just to remind you. So, the total levy increase that we're looking at doing is seven point six four percent, but we do have a twenty-two point six seven tax base increase. But as we know, that's from the reevaluations. It's not a lot of new properties. But the one number that we want to look at is, it's three point seven percent is our increase from year to year for our city taxes. So we're staying under four percent for our city portion of it. So.
Still more than any of our raises. Still higher than what any of our raises are. We put way under inflation, so.
All right, number one motion, we're still working on that approval of twenty twenty-three budget of nine million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. And when they change those additions, approve it. Bell Schimmel.
You might want to just, at the hearing, we did tell the public that because of the last workshop you had, the actual tax statement they get in March should reflect what Carla just mentioned. It should actually be a decrease from what they saw in that preliminary one just got. Yeah, a few months back, so that should help the picture a little bit.
So what, what motion are we looking for?
We're looking to approve or deny the twenty twenty-three final budget.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We're a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Now, second, uh, will be adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-two tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-three, which is the lower of the two levies. It's four million, sixty-four thousand, oops, yeah, that's what, four, right?
Yeah.
Carla?
Yeah.
Seven hundred and seventeen.
Yes.
Which will reflect on the taxes as being some lower here in town.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's to approve. Make the final at four million, sixty-four, seven seventeen, right?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you for all your work from the finance, Carla, and from the daddy's son finance. And Bill, I'm gonna give you a credit, too. Twenty twenty-two budget, committee reserve funds. The Government Accounting Standards Board adopted G S A B fifty-four, which deals on how fund reserves are classified between governmental financial statements and reports. It is similar to the old designated reserve terminology that has been used in the past. So two resolutions are attached, and they are required as a condition of G A S B fifty-four. The first resolution committing general fund balances in the new method of transferring funds in and out of designated reserves that the council has set up for specific projects or purposes. That'll be one motion. The second one, resolution committing to special revenue funds is to document what city funds the city has approved, either by legal requirements or council approval, to be treated as a special fund. Now, if you have any questions about either one of those, ask Carla. But as you can see in the first one. These are ones they're setting up.
Since those are all, excuse me, they're all committed general funds, like if we happen to spend over on one, we can flip them around, right? Or lots of another?
The, the, there's committed and restricted, and then the committed. So those are for specific areas and for specific, like the E D A, those can only go to those E D A funds.
Right, that's in the second motion. I'm looking at the one with all of the, the whole long list of the general fund stuff.
Right.
Like street coating, swimming pool capital, and.
Right. So those are, I mean, those are, those are committed to those areas, and if we overspend in one year, those are funds that basically then, especially for like the capital for the pool. So as they, we're aging on the pool, we're making sure that we're putting extra into that, because we may need a bigger portion of that budget from year, from in twenty twenty-three than we need in twenty twenty-four, dependent on some of the things that have to be done with it. But we also have capital funds and other general funds that won't be used that can be go up to general purposes as well.
Right, and some of these just build, apparently, right?
Yes.
Like the Capital Sidewalk, for example, add forty thousand.
Yes.
It's at two sixty-five, but we don't necessarily have any major plan for that right now.
Well, those are for the connections that we're making.
Eventually, they won't be, right? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution committing general fund balances for specific purposes and projects.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion other? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes on a second motion to approve or deny the resolution committing specific revenue sources in the special revenue fund. I'll make a motion to approve that as well. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one also carries. All right, next item, enterprise designated retained earnings. Council previously approved the cash flow needs for the water and sewer of twenty twenty-two projects. Recognize that retained earning balance would be utilized. Formal approval of the use of the enterprise designations retained earnings should be considered. So, questions for Carla?
So these funds are for the specific, where it's at right now?
These are for specifically for the enterprise areas. So like, we're doing the big, um, we're looking at the wastewater treatment and doing that project. This is where the funds can come from that we're being able to build up.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, but also carries. What we'll take is to union contract personnel policy twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Personnel committee has completed the negotiation process with the union, local forty-nine representatives, and per council budget directives. Upon approval, the contract personnel policy documents will be updated accordingly. This will include the council representatives' recommendations for the updates. This will include the council representatives' recommendations for the updates to the city organizational chart, pay grade chart, wage grid chart, along with the COLA adjustments over the next three years, which continues following the ten-year average of the CPI formula. Two point five for twenty twenty-three. And an overall city wage grid adjustment of two percent, two percent, two percent. Respectively scheduled to become effective in phases to help fall within budget parameters and regional pay range equalization over the next three years of the contract policy. The non-union city employees will also fall under the same recommendations for those same three years of the personnel policies. These directives will become effective January one, twenty twenty-three. Personnel committee has recommended approval for the renewal of a three-year agreement for the city's union contract and personnel policy for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five for all affected city employees. Council action requested would be approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five union contract and personnel policy. Any questions? Any discussion?
Look, you guys, it's not on that Q and A, you make the...
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that also carries. Next item, Florence Park Billings, let's see, we're looking for a lot split. Lot split and transfer. Park boards recommend that the red outlined parcel be needed over to B Billings, four oh nine Second Street Northwest. The recommendation comes of request of Billings to square up for a broad deed line to match up others to the right or the east of it. You may remember that the same scenario took place at Meadow Park South in two thousand and eighteen. Billings will be responsible for survey and legal fees for a lot split and preparation of deed, if approved. Plank Commission held a public hearing on December sixth and are recommending approval of the lot split. So, council action is to approve the land split and authorize the mayor and city administrator to complete the land transaction. Questions or discussion?
Any concerns, Josh?
No, it made sense to line it up and like we said, I think it was done in twenty eighteen in Meadow Park South, so.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion. We have a motion to approve, Jeremiah, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Jeremiah made the motion to approve, Brent made the motion to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, the water tower lot split and sale to Geotech. At the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, council approval is given to sell one point three nine acres of our water tower well site for twenty-seven thousand dollars an acre to Geotech. Geotech is in the process of building a thirty thousand square foot expansion and acquiring this extra land gives them more space for their service road to the back of their new addition. SEH has researched how much land is needed for a future well. And the remaining one point six nine acres is suitable. Plank Commission held a public hearing on December sixth and are recommending approval of the split. Questions or discussion? Council action requested is to approve the lot split and authorize the mayor and city administrator to complete the land transaction. Any questions or discussion on that one?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Brent, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carries. Momentary refreshment here. That wasn't on that deal we were just doing, was it?
No, it's not.
We had it on our internal work book for your packet, and it did get transferred, built out.
It should be on there now, that'll be your last item.
Okay. Next item, warming house attendance. Preparation for the hockey skating season, we recommend the following to staff. The warming house at Florence and Meadow Parks. Contractual services, employee Jacob Chop, hiring back from previous years, Kent Larson, Steve Diddle, Andrew Jellic, New Bo Betcher, Alex Hebel. You wanna, you wanna hire them all, approve them all? Okay, we're looking to approve the above applicants. Questions or discussion? Nothing?
Make a motion to approve.
You got a motion, do we got a second?
I'll second that.
We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Take us on to elections, designated polling place. New legislative changes include the need to designate our polling place each year. Attaches a resolution designating Sturford Civic Center as the polling place for Sturford residents. Simple resolution, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash, designated Civic Center as the polling place for Sturford residents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Mendoc agreement, designate Mendoc an federal aid project. City has received an agency agreement from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for federal participation in construction. This agreement is intended to cover all federal aid projects initiated by the city of Sturford and therefore has no specific state project number associated with it. The agreement designates Mendoc to act as its agent in accepting federal funds on its behalf. Staff along with city engineer Jenna Obernolte has reviewed the contract and is recommending approval. Council action is to approve the resolution approving the agency agreement. Questions for Jenna or Ellen? If not, we'll look for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, I would want the state to not be able to touch every money that comes through.
Alright, we got that motion, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. Okay. Next item. Grant navigation. The LMC has a grant opportunity for up to five thousand for funding grant navigation. This grant will reimburse costs by identifying and matching a library expansion project with grant application. The city has a current contract with Kelly at SEDA and is used on as a, as a, as needed basis. Kelly's time would be reimbursed for expense with this grant. Kelly can provide grant support to the library staff to help find and develop opportunities for the library expansion project. Council must pass this resolution of support for the project to be eligible for lead grant. This ensures the city is ready to move forward with the project if they are awarded a grant. Applications will not be considered until a copy of that resolution has been submitted to the league. So, we gotta find any grants here, we gotta approve this. So the action will be to approve or deny resolution number twenty twenty-two dash, resolution authorizing application for grant navigation support for this city. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Twenty twenty-two audit.
You can take a minute. Read that quickly.
You got it? Attached please find proposal from Smith Schaefer to conduct the twenty twenty-two year-end financial audit and prepare the financial statement under all legal compliances. The proposal is for thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, including expenses. The fee increased by one thousand, thirty dollars from last year. Included in the proposal is the work needed for the application, necessary documentation for the GFOA certificate of achievement. Council previously taken action directing staff to obtain the certificate. This certificate is a national recognition of the city's financial and economic status, which will be used to determine bond ratings. An economic development tool and a measurement of the council and staff's financial management of public assets. To approve or deny Smith Schaefer and associates' proposal to conduct twenty twenty-two year-end audit and prepare the financial statement and GFOA certificate of achievement application. That's the action. Do we have a motion?
We'll make that motion. Give it a what?
Approve it or deny it?
Approve it.
Okay.
It's a lot of work.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
Craig needs to censor that audit again.
That takes us out of that one. That takes the mayor's staff consult reports, mayor's report. City would like to send their sympathy out to the families of Carol Gissler, Anne Farnham, Dorothy Berquen, Laura Leacy, Reverend Ron Brighi, Joseph Strife, Cindy Roberts. And we'd also like to send our sympathies to Jenna and Paul on the death of his father. I'd like to send a big thank you out to the chamber, they had a great winter fest, we had good turnout at everything. Everything went well. Okay, and don't forget, here at City Hall, we're holding our annual open house on December twenty-first from ten to four. Everyone's welcome. Got some treats lined up for you, it's always decorated very nicely in here, everybody's. And I'd like to send you out, being our last meeting of the year, Christmas is coming up. The best gift around any Christmas tree is a happy family. A perfect example here, they all wear pajamas and dance around.
And forgiveness for social media.
My wish for all citizens is if you're not able to be with family during the holidays, I hope the days are filled with special memories. And if you're having a hard time finding a gift, an easy one to give away is a hug. It's free, fits all sizes, and it's easy to return. With that, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Where did that come from?
Come from my heart.
Oh, boy. Put all the booze around here. Jeez.
That takes us to city minister's report.
You need to bring your boots to the next day.
Oh, oh, back it up. From the mayor's report. I forgot to congratulate our own Bill Schimmel on winning the Northern Jones Award in the Lions this year. Very good job, well done. Huzzah, huzzah. Alright, that takes us to city minister's report.
Uh, reports in your packet, pretty easy one.
Sure.
Behalf of all employees and all your staff, all throughout all our departments. Merry Christmas to all of you and all of our citizens.
Any questions for our city minister before we let him off for the year? Alright, thank you, Bill, thanks for all you did this year. Finance director, Carla.
Um, we are working on wrapping up twenty twenty-two and flying into twenty twenty-three, started today on pre-audit stuff for twenty twenty-two. Everybody on the board, you're more than welcome to come help me go through the board and get it all out to our auditors. Um, so just, yeah, just trying to get everything wrapped up and move forward and get everything figured out.
Any questions for Carla? Good work, all you, yep, thanks for keeping an eye on all that money. Did you find that ten dollars gone?
Ten dollars, no, I just took it off my lap.
Alright, thank you. Public Works Director Sean is not here tonight, but he is reporting the packet.
Yep, we've been, um, staying busy with their chores. And then, um, as you know, this last snowfall, because of the nature of when it fell, we didn't do the full emergency. But we did ask courtesy of the citizens to try to stay clear of the streets. So when it did hit and when we did get out, we did try to get as much done as possible. Um, we've also got new guys, so they're getting to learn the routes and the equipment. So we hope citizens are patient with us as we get those fellers used to everything and used to the equipment. And this last round, because of the nature of how much we got, we did do some extra cleanup in some areas, in case you get questions on that. But that was part of the follow-up as we train our guys into these new areas, so. It'll be a learning year for most of them, but...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a real learning.
Yep.
You hop in one of them big trucks and go, I've tried it the first time or two, it's not that easy. I got some very interesting phone calls myself over the last snow.
Yeah, I guess in light of a couple of those, please know that when sod gets eaten or bit a little bit, especially on ride over curb areas, we come back in the spring and get that all worked out. So if you guys get those calls yourselves, you can pass that on.
You guys, if you get those calls, let them know on that sod part, them guys, when they looking at me and see that sod, they're not happy with theirself either. They're not trying to do that. That's just part of the game. So, we hope there is a little more patience out there this year. Anything else for, you wanna know about public works director Brent, anything?
Nothing.
He wait for the pool one.
That's right.
Alright, thanks. All sense. Alright, our next one will be Jenna, city engineer's report.
Alright, um, report for you guys is that we will be opening this next Tuesday and we'll bring those to you on your first council meeting in January. We currently have nine prime bidders, but, uh, on each project and at least twenty-eight plan holders for each project, so. I've been busy on phone calls.
Twenty-eight, what did you say?
Plan holders, so that includes suppliers and subcontractors. But there's nine primes that are currently looking at the plans.
Good, any questions for Jenna? She's had a busy year out here too.
Yes.
Alright, thank you for all your hard work too, and let's hope these openings go well.
I hope so.
Alright, let's see. Library directors report, Nate, what do you got to say for yourself tonight?
We are doing a lot of fun stuff, um, with, we're only open three days between Christmas and New Year's, uh, but we have a library program planned for each one of those days. On December twenty-seventh, we are having Magic Norm come to the library for an in-person magic show. Magic Norm is awesome, if you get a chance, have a kid who wants to be bewildered with, uh, magic.
Do you have to hire extra security control for that? Magic Norm makes me a little nervous.
So Magic Norm, I've seen Magic Norm many times, he's, uh, written down at the library, he's pretty great. Uh, December twenty-eighth, we're having a drop-in program, uh, perma bead making, um, it is a make, bake, and take program. So you can, we have a lot of perma beads left over from various crafts we've done over the last couple of years. Can, has a chance to use up some of those supplies. And on December twenty-ninth, from one to four, we're gonna have a Lego free build in the library. So, should be pretty fun.
I want gingerbread houses, I love my houses.
We made, I made two hundred and thirteen gingerbread houses with a team of, uh, um, expert builders. We made a whole subdivision and a half or so, and, um, so far, uh, they've all been claimed. And a hundred and ninety-nine of them have gone out the door.
Wow.
Perfect.
And it has been awesome serving this community for another year, and I'm super, super excited for the things we're able to do in two thousand and twenty-three.
What do you think, guys, we're offering her here?
I can do that, I'm in a tent.
Alright, thanks Nate. Thanks for keeping up the good work. Next one, fire chief report.
Voice on the Christmas tree.
Yep.
Yes, I just wanted to play gifts. Uh, real quick, I had a commercial fire down at Racine, uh, two Saturdays ago, uh, fully involved with commercial building. Uh, went really well, had a good turnout from the fire department. We did call Grand Meadow for assistance, uh, though probably didn't heat them there. By the time they got there, we had pretty much knocked down. Uh, so that went really well. A couple of months ago, I talked about, uh, the department getting eight radios out of a decommissioned radio cache from the state of Minnesota. Those radios are in Homestead County and being programmed by Homestead County Sheriff's Department for us. So we'll have those in our inventory probably by the end of the week. Uh, just as example, each of those radios is probably about a five thousand dollar radio. So it's a pretty decent change that the state gave us for that. Uh, twenty twenty-two run numbers, uh, just for, to remind the council, we kind of run our numbers from December first to November thirtieth. Uh, more for the payroll than anything else. But twenty twenty-two numbers are up, we had a total of six hundred and two calls. One hundred and eleven, one hundred and eleven of them are fire-related. Four hundred and ninety-one of them are EMS-related. Uh, so our numbers are going up, as an example, in twenty twenty-one, we had about four hundred and fifty-eight medical runs. So we're about another thirty, thirty-five runs higher. So we're about another thirty, thirty-five runs higher than shared medical runs. Fire runs are usually running about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five, so that's staying relatively consistent. Then the last thing I got, we did have a little bit of a change of the executive team for the fire department. Steve Wolf has been the assistant chief for me for the last nine years. He's chosen to step down. He has been in either the chief or the assistant chief role probably for at least the last fifteen years. So he is stepping back to a lieutenant's position. And Brandon Dolman, who is one of our current lieutenants, he's been on the department probably about five, six years, maybe a little bit longer, is stepping up into the assistant chief role. He was actually on one of our neighboring departments before he came to us, so he's got some experience. But really wants to take that time, just kind of learn that assistant chief role a little bit. Steve and I talked about it, Brandon and Steve talked about it. Steve's the kind of leading guy then from the backseat and then I'll kind of lead him from the front to give him just basically some guidance and see how he matures. Rest of the leadership team has stayed the same. Josh Poteen remains the secretary, Justin Maloney remains the EMS director, Nathan Petrick remains the treasurer. Josh Murphy and Bob Robertson are both the at-large members of the executive board. And then Nate, I asked the fire chief for at least another year, so. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Chief?
No. How was the party?
Good. Got a lot of crap, I'll hit him with a pickup truck and a ladder truck.
I bet you did.
We're gonna say anything. Father, they won't report it to our insurance.
So we didn't have a vehicle accident at the winter fest. The ladder truck made contact with Mike waiting to pick up, so. Left a little mark on it, so. We're not gonna say who was driving the ladder truck at the time, but.
Same guy blew that other fire truck up driving down.
Yeah, blew that one up, but wrecked the other ladder truck into the garage door. I'm not having it. Not sure why I would let him drive. I'll have the chief talk to that person a little more.
Alright. Thanks for answering, guys, I've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
Alright, pool director. He's not here in person, but did anything you want to ask him?
He'll probably get started here.
That takes us to committee commission, Morgan Porch, Chamber of Commerce. They're just kind of kicking back after winter for us, taking it easy here a little bit, getting ready for next year. EDA, HRA.
Soundly, they have a meeting next week.
Yep, meeting next week, last one for the year, finance.
Nothing.
Library.
Nothing.
Park board.
Nothing.
Personnel?
No.
Finance only.
Our minutes early meeting from last week.
Public safety?
I have nothing news for council tonight, but Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to you too. Keep up the good work out there, thank you very much. Public works? Ready?
No report.
Rock on.
No report.
Dreams advisory committee?
Nope, just they're doing advertising quite a bit, if you've heard it on the radio or whatever.
Really?
So that probably has helped enhance those numbers just last time, so.
Communications, nothing in our packet. Open mic, I think we're gonna get to hear from Mr. Mueller. You didn't want to speak?
No, just here to visit, say, I'm humbled by the turnout with the election and say thank you and wish everybody Merry Christmas and I'm gonna keep offering and visiting and trying to catch up with what's going on.
Alright, well, thank you. You might want to wait here before you really thank us, so. If you still like us or not.
Mayor's ire is starting to west.
Alright, that'll take us to the final motion of folks for the year.
I will move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn for the year, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second, I knew they had. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.